Oh, I can get up, but this is getting up and down and up and down.
Either that or we could set it on this pad, boy, maybe?
Oh, there you go. Good enough.
Then you don't have to hold on to it.
Um, Lyle Louise, Kelso Township, uh, the chairman, we had our annual meeting and with our Kelso Township constituents and the residents of Kelso, and we would like to, we entertain the idea of going back to mail-in balloting and,
in person.
In person, I'm sorry, in-person, uh, voting. And so, reaching out to the city of Arlington to see if, uh, we can work something out, basically, um, and to have our voting place here with the city of Arlington.
And just, I'll just briefly, I spoke with Mary Lee Peterson at the county and we talked about combine the polling places versus a shared polling place. And, um, there's a handout in front of everybody, all the council members, and there's some up front if the public would like to see it. What it would mean if we were combined, we would share election judges, share costs. Otherwise, if it was shared, it would be like when it was with Arlington Township. They had their own election judges, we had their own election judges, but you have to share the same machine at the end and tabulate the results together. She said it would be advantageous for us if we would combine polling face places financially and with election judges.
And I think that's where we were going, too.
Yep, that's what you were thinking, and that's what I told Mary Lee. And these guys, Kelso Township does have to submit the resolution with their polling place by the end of March, so.
Yeah, next Monday or Tuesday, Tuesday, next Tuesday.
So, that's why we do need to kind of figure out what we want to do if Arlington would like to move forward with it. We have a resolution that we would need to approve for a combined polling place. So I have that available. If after the workshop, that's what we decide to do, I'd like to add it to the agenda, the resolution for the combined polling place. So, Lyle?
Is there any questions for Paxton Township, or Paxton?
Kelso.
Kelso.
Paxton is too far away.
Too far away.
You got anything to add?
No, I'd just say, uh, our number of voters last, uh, general election was a big collection. We have one hundred fifty-six voters come through. That's pretty high for our little township.
Mm-hmm.
So, so would you guys have, uh, representation? So like right now, um, I don't know if it's a committee or how it is, but there's, there's folks that are here and, and, you know, checking IDs and helping people get.
I've been an election judge, uh, ever since two thousand, and so I'll be more than happy to if Vicky, you know, if, you know, if you guys need help.
I called the county, I, I had things in my mind, what's shared and combined, and I just called the county to clarify a few cobwebs to make sure I was straight before I came to the meeting. Yes, the combined collectively, one set of judges, as Amy said, one set of judges, um, we would have to determine between the city and township together, one election official. I don't know if you guys had in mind yours or me or what the situation, so that still has to be decided.
Cause there'd be only one head election judge.
One election, one election official.
Yeah.
Me, you, whoever. Um, and then collective group of judges, whether between the township and city. They, and it's up to that election official then to decide who works the shifts. And yes, some election judges from the township don't necessarily all have to work, but it, it's advised. But at least have to be, um, appointed, you know, by a resolution. So your, most of the judges have to be appointed, city and township. And then whether they work a shift or not, but at least they're on the resolution as appointed, so they can be called up as an alternate as needed. So, again, it's not, not, however, do you have a lot of judges? Or is that something you were running into, a problem getting people to work shifts? So where we're at, that's kind of gonna have to be, feel that out, what we have for judges and where it's gonna have to go. You know, advise maybe one or, you know, one from your township on each shift, kind of fill it in and feel where the need, because that would probably be beneficial to know, oh yeah, that's a township person, it's not, you know, kind of helping the process go smoother.
Yep. Oh, we don't, we're not looking to step on any toes either, as far as the city of Arlington and judges.
Yeah, no. Can I ask why you're going away from mail balloting? Was it a bad deal for you in twenty twenty?
Uh, no, everything went good, uh, but we just, we, 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 we told and got it out at our annual meeting to please come, and we wanted to talk about it, and that was kind of the census. It was a little over half that wanted in-person voting.
I was just curious how, cause everyone else that went mail balloting really liked it, so I was just kind of.
And, and we, we said them, and we, we made sure that, let them know, but still optional. You just have to apply for it for an absentee ballot.
And that's, I was just getting a feel for what made you change your mind to come back to, because yeah, with all the new equipment that, we just went through all that, and now you didn't have equipment, so that kind of puts you in your predicament, so.
Vicky, is, is, is there a certain number of people that you have on, uh, based on our population, or how does it?
Yes, based, based on the number of people that come through.
So is that, is that, is that general?
More so on the general than the primary. Um, I have maybe one person less per shift on the primary than I do on the general. The general, we are very busy.
So would we use that same formula for based on their population?
Yeah, I would. I would going forward. With how we handle it, yeah.
Are you our head election official all the time?
I have been for several years.
Okay, and do you have any problem with this?
Um, if we run it similar to how we did with, if it's combined, it'll be a, a new feel, um, where, where before it was shared with Arlington Township, they had their judges, we had ours. So at the end of the night, Renee is one of my judges on the afternoon shift. Um, the end of the night, it's just all hands on deck separating city township. And that's gonna be, again, city township separating everything, so they count theirs, we counted ours. But in this case, it'll be combined, so we're just going to have to separate and do separate and separate. So it'll be a whole new feel if we're combined versus shared. Where shared, they had their judges, they knew what they were counting, we had ours. So it'll just be a little switch in gear, so to speak.
It sounds a little bit more beneficial to do it as a combined, where you're maybe sharing the cost, sharing the judges and such like that, so.
Yes.
That's.
So we can maybe.
There's not two sets of judges that have to be paid for. You're still under shared, you're still sharing the equipment and still setting, you're splitting the cost. Um, so other than eliminating one set of judges, that's where there's some savings.
Right, so you're sharing, sharing, sharing that responsibility.
So they would be paying, their judges were paying ours, where this way it's combined. So they're gonna have to understand, they're gonna be paying city of Arlington judges as we're gonna be paying township. So it's gonna be a big pool versus a smaller pool. So everyone's gonna have to understand Kelso's gonna be paying city of Arlington judges.
And, and, and at the county level, i- if need be, we can always pull from their list of people that want to be judges, and they don't have to be in Kelso.
Yeah, there's other people, oh, there's alternates, exactly. Right.
Well, I like, I fully support it. I, I would just ask that we, you know, make sure that they have the representation and, and base them on the percentage.
Oh, I, I'm not opposed that they, they need to have the representation, that's, that's the only way it's gonna make it go smoother.
Yeah. For me, standing in line is, is the way, it's just part of the process. So I, I, I can understand where that, you know, the fifty percent is saying, hey, I wanna, I wanna come and do that. So, um, it's the full experience.
Yep.
You know, and.
Does Kelso also understand, from what I understood when I talked to Mary Lee, I don't know if she shared this with Amy, um, that for the fact that we've already purchased a new voting machine in twenty twenty and our poll pads, that we can now technically backfill you if we go forward with this, we can backfill you for your share.
For the shared cost, yeah. I, 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 we kind of were.
You're not, I'm just trying to throw that out in case that was not told to you.
We, no, no, we were kind of anticipating that, we didn't wanna.
Share that with me, so I'm making that aware, that we can backfill you for your half.
Yep.
Or your portion, I should say.
Yeah, for this coming up election, yep.
Yep.
Yep, and here on forward if it goes well.
Yeah.
Yep.
Because now there's a new machine, the auto mark is getting replaced under grant.
Yep, yep.
So that would be a new piece, but we can go back to what we have, so.
Yep, it's understandable.
In case that wasn't told to you, that's why I said I called Mary Lee and I wanted to have a conversation on my own, so I know what was, what was out there.
Yep.
What do you mean going back? I mean, to me, it makes more sense to like maybe charge a rental fee or for their portion of using, moving forward, not like going back.
Going forward.
However, I'm just saying, however, no, I'm just, what she told me, we have the option to do that or somehow work out with the machines that we currently.
Well, we were just buying, right? Or we, we, then we just, we just like.
Buying, yeah.
Yeah, so I don't think we've actually even used it yet, as that where she's coming from.
Right, we've heard just done, right?
The pads we purchased, or, yeah. So, and that's.
But I mean, I could see in some kind of like something, but not where you're purchasing more like a rental fee maybe or something.
Yep.
Along those lines instead of.
I just wanted to put that out there, that they're buying into the system now that.
We have in place, I get it, I mean, that's part of it, but I don't think it should be.
She just wanted them to be aware that they, the city has that option to do that.
And that's something that we don't need to decide tonight. We can talk and we can split up the costs.
A conversation.
Uh, but I do want them to be able to pass a resolution designating their polling place.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's, that's what we need to accomplish this evening. Uh, as to how, who's gonna be billed what, I think we can trust each other, that we will work this out.
Yeah, it would seem to be fair.
The five, did we check into the five mile from the border? Does that, did that get dropped?
Yes, we did talk about that.
Well, and, and as looking at the plat, as the, the crow flies straight north and south, is, is, is under five. Now, if you go on Highway nine and actually do it there, by the time you get over here, it's maybe a little over five?
I bet if you come in on seventeen, the gravel road.
Yep, and I thought about that.
One mile south of seventeen, and then come straight into.
So what's the criteria of the five miles? Cause I know, I'm looking at the.
It was the closest corner, closest corner of Kelso Township to the community center here.
Closest corner or closest boundary?
Boundary.
Oh, that would be off by Patesville, right at the end of that mile of gravel, south of nineteen.
Yep, yep.
So is that within five miles?
It should be less than five. It's close, but it should be, it's shorter than the.
Yeah, and that's the way I went, and it was a little over, five was right at Maverick Auto, whatever.
Okay.
That's, that's where five miles came at, on my truck.
All right, any other questions or concerns from the council? Cause we will be looking at this during the council.
Would council like this to be added to the agenda? It would be resolution twenty-seven dash, we'll add it then.
Yeah.
And then you guys will have a special meeting.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
And we will stay in touch.
All right.
Please.
That won't work. Okay, we'll move right along the agenda then, unless there is some, is there any other concerns, questions, either from?
Now's your time.
Kelso or from council members, yeah. I don't hear anything, so I think it's.
I think we're good.
Thank you. Thank you.
He's walking in.
He's caught, he's on the hall there.
He can move the chair.
Just showed it. Here you go, your turn.
He's walking in right on time. Right on time, look at that.
I wish everything was as smooth.
Good evening.
How are we doing?
Good, good. Item four on the agenda, building official contracts. Just put Darren Haslam.
I am. Yeah, we.
New council member.
Never met him before.
Yeah, well, you got the, the big building done on Henderson, yep.
Did you want to introduce?
Yes, so Darren has proposed a new contract, a simple, a simplified contract for the city of Arlington beginning April first. This has been added to the agenda. I just wanted Darren to come to the workshop and explain why he was changing his contract, and it would be effective April first. And we made some changes to the fee schedule then, which you'll see on the council agenda later to match up with the new contract, which will begin April first.
Yep. Uh, well, thanks for having me, first of all. Um, the primary reason that I'm going to this schedule is right now, so much of what I do is just hourly, and this tracking of everything, it gets to the point, uh, it's just very cumbersome, very time-consuming. It's the only jurisdiction I do this way, that's hourly. Um, you get to the point of thinking, okay, someone called me about something, is that an hour? Or is that, I mean, do I track it by the minute, the second? It, it just, it's, it's gotten to be, uh, just too much of a, an administrative task. So, what I've done is what I do in my other jurisdictions, we just, we have the same fee schedule for most everything that we do. But now it's, we just take a percentage of the fee and you guys get a percentage. The nice thing about that is if the economy goes in the crapper, you're gonna be, you're not really, you're never gonna lose. I mean, whether it's good or bad, you're always gonna get a percent of it. Um, the, uh, the other thing is, we have probably ninety percent of what we do is fixed fee permits, and those went up a little bit. Um, but they were due to go up. And there's a lot of stuff in there that I had to put in there. Um, don't get me wrong, I'm not, uh, I'm not gonna track people down if they, if they sneak a water heater in their house on a Saturday. Uh, you know, they, uh, they put it in the topper of their truck and drive in their garage. We don't know that, and if something was to happen and that water heater exploded, for example, we just have to have those things listed, that we do require permits for those things, okay? Because if that happens, there's gonna be an attorney and an insurance company and a lot of people knocking on our door, asking, do you require permits to do this? And then we just say yes, we do, cause we have it, they're listed out there. And, uh, and down the road we go. And it's all about deflecting liability away from the city and myself and, you know, put it on the parties who are actually, uh, responsible, so. In that case, I just shared with you, it'd be the person that snuck the water heater, they're the ones that are gonna have the problem, so.
So did all the council members have a chance to look at his new proposed contract? Do you have any questions for Darren while he's here? Otherwise, we'll just approve it at the council meeting. But now's your chance to ask Darren, any questions?
I see one part of it, it says, uh, about visiting council meetings as required. Is that something in other communities you do is, you, you just, go to maybe one a year or two a year or just to?
Yeah, I mean, it's something that, uh, it's, it's fine with me. I mean, I live a mile away, so it's not a big deal, but.
Right, right.
But, uh, yeah, it's, it kind of got off kilter with, uh, the last few years with all the, the COVID and all the other fun stuff going on.
Yeah, yeah.
But, uh, yeah, I mean, it's, it's not a problem coming in. If, if there's something that, uh, you know, we want to discuss or anything you might think you need to talk about, um.
I would assume if there's something on your end that you need to bring to the attention of the city, you'd probably relay it to the city minister.
Yeah, 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 Amy's been good, too. We've got, uh, you know, we, we communicate well and, uh, you know, uh, Phil's been doing good to keep me informed on what he's got going on, so.
Good.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's working out pretty good.
Yeah, I guess as a council member, I would like to see at least once a year, just to kind of give a little overview or something.
Yeah, that's, that's not a problem.
You know, unless, unless something, you know, major comes up where you would need to be here or something.
Yeah, and if we could do it during the colder months, it's better for me.
Sure, absolutely.
Whatever works in your schedule, I would say absolutely, too, but it would just be nice to see your face and, uh, hear what, hear what's in your head.
You see it almost every day.
Well, I know, I do. Most of these people do.
That's why, that's why.
Never seen it before.
Well, I can speak from personal experience that Darren is very accessible. If I have a question for him, I can tell he's on the road, but he's talking to me, and he's got that five minutes that it takes to, to, uh, give me an answer, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, well, it's, it's, uh, that's one of the things, too, about what I do is, I'm accessible anytime. I mean, I don't care if it's after hours, weekends, you know, give me a jingle if you need me for something, and, uh, we'll take care of you.
I can say everybody I've talked to regarding permits, too, always says Darren is so easy to work with.
Yeah, it's, uh, I'm like anybody else, so, you know, it's, uh, usually you spend about ninety percent of your time on ten percent of the problems, you know? That's kind of how it usually works out. Um, we've got those problem, uh, people you gotta deal with, everyone has to, and, you know, it's just the way it goes. I mean, it's, comes with the territory, so. But yeah, we're, uh, we're, we're kind of seeing out there that, you know, there's, uh, there's more and more need for what people like I do, so I've, I've brought some people on now. I've got a, a person that's doing the plan interview work for me, and he's highly qualified. I got a fire marshal now that works for us. Um, and I've got a guy out west of here that's doing, you know, they're all code officials, by the way, so, um, yeah, it's working out pretty well with them, too, so.
And we have a lot of big projects coming up.
That's the way it's looking.
New housing developments.
Yep. Well, yeah, I think, uh, it's good you're planning ahead, because I think it's coming this way pretty fast, so.
Yep, we can feel it. All right, if, any more questions for Darren? Otherwise, we'll be, uh, dealing with this during our regular council meeting today.
Sounds great, yeah, and if you need me to come to a meeting in the future yourself, something comes up, just give me a call, we'll come on in.
Sounds good.
All right?
Thank you very much.
All right, yeah, thanks for having me. Yep, yep, nice meeting you, too.
Bye.
I wasn't complaining.
All right, item five, new off-sale liquor license application.
Alberto, could you come up to the table? And anybody else you'd like to come up to the table with you? Alberto is looking at opening an off-sale liquor store in the Mexican restaurant in town. If you know where that building is behind the Hispanic Market, up above Third Street.
Just pull up some chairs if you want, pull them up and.
Pull them up, have a seat.
Share the microphone or whatever.
Yep. Uh, we had, council had to discuss this. It was within the last year, the Patel Group member had brought to us about opening a liquor store at the gas station across Highway five. And council denied that, it was zoned improperly, though. But before we approve another liquor store in town, I thought it would be good to discuss it at a workshop. But it is on the agenda for tonight to take action on his liquor license. He's applying for an off-sale, an on-sale, and a Sunday sale liquor license. So I guess Alberto, if you'd like to, tell the council what you're looking at doing.
Si, buenas tardes primero.
Oh, good afternoon, evening.
Este, quisiéramos, si nos pueden dar la licencia del, para tomar y para, para llevar? Quisiéramos expandir un poquito más nuestro negocio.
Okay, so he's looking forward to expanding a little bit more his business by, um, doing on sale and off sale?
For the restaurant.
For the restaurant.
Could you move the microphone over to the one that, there you go, just move it closer to you.
That one, you gotta talk really.
You gotta talk really close, like right into it.
Don't be shy on that one. Okay. Go ahead.
Um, just reboot myself?
No, no, it's okay, I think we heard that, but just.
Yep, so his biggest, uh, thing is that he wants to expand his restaurant, um, by doing on sale and off sale liquor.
Porque queremos poner una pequeña barra para, en el restaurante, para hacer bebidas, para margaritas y.
Um, so they're hoping to do like a little bar tending at the, um, at that restaurant, so they could be doing, uh, mixed drinks for the customers.
And this one, they are zoned properly to have a liquor store.
I just came with, uh, Brandon Brickman, I call some numbers. I, uh, came with to, uh, just help out a little bit. I'm their general contractor for, uh, the future expansions at the, uh, market and stuff. But we talked about how we'd have to split up the buildings for, if they were gonna serve liquor and so on and so forth. But he wants to build a bar in back with actual, uh, and we'd have to split the, um, restaurant and the market for, uh, I believe it's, I can't remember the code that off the top of my head, so there wouldn't be any alcohol getting into the.
They have to have a separate entrance for the liquor store.
Okay.
And so, but he also wants to put a bar in, just, just a little bar in there.
And he's willing. He's willing to do the separate entrance and all to stay.
Correct, yes, yes.
And he do say he's zoned right for it.
So there is separate entrances already, you're just gonna have to do a wall in between to, like, make that separation or what, Brandon?
I'm not a hundred percent sure because of, um, the fire code, we might have to put in two entrances and, uh, and work with.
In that hallway, yeah.
Yes, yeah, yeah. And then that would also require some negotiations on our part, but they wanted to check on all the elections first.
Yeah, yeah. And he does want an off-sale also, is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes. And from what I've been told.
Yep. Yep, on and off.
I'm just the contractor, though.
Okay.
So on and off, and then Sunday, on and off, right?
Yeah, Monday, Monday.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, Sunday, too, if that's possible.
That's what they've applied for.
Okay. Questions from the council?
On your off sale, how large do you think it'll go on, or how much room do you have for that in that building?
Um, pues tenemos, tenemos más o menos espacio, no vamos a necesitar arreglar bien el lugar para.
They've have, they, he says they have a quite a amount of space, they just need to rearrange and fix things around.
So would the restaurant be moved then? Are you still gonna have the restaurant?
El restaurante lo va a mover o va a estar al mismo?
Va a ser.
On the mismo? It would be in the same spot, in the mismo lugar donde está. Yeah, same spot.
It's hard to envision.
It is, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's hard to see, you know?
Si, vamos a, pues él nos va a ayudar para hacer la construcción.
Yeah, that's why they have the contractor, which will give them ideas on what's gonna work best for them, the, the construction that would be needed.
So would the restaurant be open seven days a week, or just weekends, or?
Ahorita solamente se abre.
Como estaría?
Como estaría, eh, luego abrirse.
Yeah, if they start selling, um, on Sundays for liquor, um, they'd be open seven days a week.
Would the hours change?
¿El horario cambia? Yes.
To, any idea?
Yeah, they would be closing, uh, later, just because of the liquor. She's saying nine, it's just an estimate right now, nine p.m. Like ten a.m. for opening.
Ten a.m. to nine p.m. is, is what you're thinking for hours?
To nine, yep. For now.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions?
Kind of like Arlington House where she's open pretty much for food and serve, you know, off sale. She still do off sale, you know?
I know, she still has an offer.
Little bit, very little bit or whatever. Is that kind of the type of off sale you're thinking of? Or are you thinking a little bit bigger than what, um, Arlington House has right now? Where they, I think they have like a little cooler with some items.
I don't know if she kept that off sale license.
Algo así quisiera más.
O más grande.
I, I think, I think más grande.
You have just something smaller, just like that, kind of like just having the coolers, they don't think too big.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
Okay.
Lo que nos interesa más es cómo poder tener para las bebidas que vamos a hacer más para el restaurante, si alguien quiere para llevar.
Yeah, they're, they're just, um, thinking more for like mixing drinks and all that at the, at a bar at the restaurant, so they can, you know, mix drinks and get out.
You know, somebody wants to take a bottle home, or something.
Yeah.
Is that what they still do? Do they still have that option?
Yeah, I'll, I'll go with those two. I mean, there's not a lot, a lot, a lot of stuff that moves out of there, but if somebody's leaving the bar and wants to grab a case of beer, a lot.
There's a bill.
There's not a lot of off sale going on.
And the bowling alley sales.
They got on sale, I don't know if they have off sale.
On sale? Oh, they did have off sale one, one time.
They do not right now.
They don't anymore, all right. They don't anymore, all right. Okay. All right, any other questions? This will be on our, at our council meeting to follow now, the, so we will be discussing it more and making the decision.
We do also have the new owner of the Arlington Liquor Store in the audience, Sean Diddle.
Sean Diddle.
I think you wanted to say something to council too during the workshop.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you. Welcome, Sean.
Thank you. I guess on this same deal, I guess I do have some, um, concerns, obviously. We haven't even closed on our deal yet, so it's concerning to me that this could affect my business, um. Excuse me, I hate talking to front people. But anyways.
You're fine.
I think you don't cry.
We're not done yet. Well, my, one of my concerns is kinda in the talks of this deal, there was mention of him closing the restaurant and making it a full-blown liquor store. There was rumors of that. So that concerns me. Cause once he gets that off-sale, the on-sale doesn't bother me at all, obviously, but once he gets that off-sale, he can do whatever he wants. And I don't know if Arlington's big enough to support two full-blown liquor stores. Not saying he's doing that, but that's, that was one of the options I heard.
I just feel bad for him though, because he is another one, the second person that looked at buying my business, saw my financials, explained how everything went and how it worked, daily sales, and now they want their own liquor store off sale. That's kinda disturbing to me, but in a town like this, and everybody says it's good for competition, well, yes, we had two or three, um, hardware stores, we had a bake, well, we had two drugstores, we had a couple flower shops, and to name how many gas stations we used to have, but we did not have, um, Menards, the Colburns, the Sam's Clubs, um, to compete with at that time. So competition was good, cause everybody shopped at your hometown. Now everybody, not everybody, most people work out of town and have lots of opportunities to stop in other places. And I just think he already has two businesses, and I don't care if he has an on-sale, I like to have a beer with my food. Then I don't necessarily think another off-sale is deemed required of him.
And it's hard to, going into being a new business owner and looking at the, you know, financials, and now having someone possibly come in and take part of it. Now you're, you know, now you're questioning, can I make it, you know? But I, I, like, I agree with Renee, their competition is good, obviously, but there is competition, I mean, you're competing with someone going through your nail, picking up the bottle, you're competing with all that stuff, so. To have another full-blown, like I said, if it was what he was saying, having like what, Rin, or, uh, Timmy says,
An off-sale.
Just a little corner thing, I have no problem with that, but once he gets the off-sale, there's nothing keeping him from doing that.
Well, yeah, you, you can't control if he's gonna have a little cooler or if he's gonna have high, huge.
Right.
He provides the restaurant, go to the whole off-sale.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, I guess, you know, you, you go by the, the license itself, right, so, um, but, but we don't know that.
Right. Right, and, no, we don't for sure. Um, like I said, it, there was mention of it, um, when we were at a phone conversation with, I think it was Phil and Amy and him. And that was brought up. I mean, it didn't seem like he really knew what he was gonna do. I'm not bad enough, because you can't, you know, fault the guy for trying to grow his business. But then you gotta look at my side of it too, um, this is all I have.
At your side, yeah.
All I have is off-sale. And to have someone else compete with me when they got something else to fall back on, that, I'm, it's concerning.
I mean, to even get a chip for, uh, anything candy bar in there, you have to have another old license. And there's stipulations with that too, if you get a food license. So that's what we wanted to, to second send.
Thank you, guys.
Yep, thank you, appreciate your input. All right, any other discussion items that, uh, council wants to, we're through with our agenda, so. Anything you wanna talk about now or wait till we get to the items in the regular agenda? Hearing none, motion is in order to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, see?
Is it a second?
Second.
Motion by council member Thomas, second by council member Batchard to adjourn the meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at six oh five.